I would like to call this public hearing to order for the purposes of receiving citizens' comments on the county's advertised real estate tax of 90.5 cents per hundred dollars assessed value. The Board of Supervisors voted to advertise a one and a half cent real estate tax rate increase from the current rate of 89 cents. In order for the Board to consider a rate higher than 90.5 cents for real estate, we would be required to re-advertise and hold another public hearing. Following this public hearing, a second public hearing on the advertised budget on the 2018-2019 will be held at 6:15 or soon thereafter. I will call the name of the speaker. The next speaker on the list should also come forward and be prepared to speak. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have a total of five minutes. Please use the microphone when speaking. Please direct your comments to the Chair and the members of the Board, not to the audience or staff. This is our time to listen to you. We will not be answering questions during these hearings. We ask the audience to refrain from clapping or commenting between speakers so that we may clearly hear the next speaker. Please leave any written statements with the clerk. And that being said, I'm going to first go off a list that we have of speakers, and then you don't have to be on the list to be able to speak. And so after we go through this list, we'll go through the speakers. The first speaker I have is Erica Lear. Erica? Next is Gunnin, our School Board Chair.
I do realize I'm here in the first row. I was thinking I would count down. Good evening, Chair back, members of the Supervisors and Mr. Meadows. I probably should have been in both lists, or what I'm going to do right now might belong to the other list, but at the end I would make my citizen comments too, so it will fit to this list as well. What I'm going to do is, I think I'm going to read the letter that you already have received on my Board's behalf with my signature on it. Dear Chair back and members of the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of Montgomery County School Board, I appreciate the opportunity to address recent budget conversations as you continue to deliberate regarding to 2018-19 budget for Montgomery County. The School Board's budget priorities have not changed from our presentation to you on February 12th, and they are salary enhancement for our employees, 1.5% average pay increase, maintaining our employee benefits without change to employee premiums, technology equipment and Chromebook sustainability, school bus replacements, two buses, and capital maintenance. We understand and appreciate recent discussions surrounding additional School Board Resource Officers at elementary schools within the county. We fully support this request provided that additional funding is available outside of the additional school funding proposed by Mr. Meadows. We are opposed to any attempts to take present or future monies from MCPS budget to pay for those requests. We support the county administrator's proposed budget, while it does not meet all our budget priorities. As you know, our dream budget was 7 million, and we ask 2.1, and we're hoping to receive 1.5. We support, as I said, we support the proposed budget, and it does not meet all our budget priorities, but we believe that we can make the budget work in a way that will benefit our employees without compromising our instructional program. We appreciate the consideration of the Board of Supervisors to provide funding for school bus replacement and capital improvement through one-time funds at the end of the fiscal year, so we are really counting on the carryover as well. School safety continues to be a priority for our school division. We are reviewing all our facilities to determine what additional upgrades can be put in place to enhance safety. Any requests from us in this area would be in the form of a new one-time request outside the operating budget. To assure you of our commitment to school safety, we have already attached a letter that was sent to all our parents outlining the safety precautions that are already in place in our schools. We thank you for your communication and collaboration throughout the process as we work together to ensure that all children in Montgomery County are afforded an equality education experience sincerely, Gunnin, Crown Board Chair. Now with my citizen, I will definitely support the tax increase, whether what you would decide would be an alpha penny, a penny, penny, and a half. I think we have to create resources to provide those School Board, School Resource Officers, but again, it will be your Board's appropriation, whether it will be only four county Resource Officers or all the Resource Officers needed in all the elementary schools. We cannot say as a citizen or as a Board Member on the School Board that we do not care for the safety of our children and School Board, School Resource Officers, I keep saying School Board, I think I'm some attached to School Board. School Resource Officers need, and I think I share with your Board and my Board that we have Resource Officers, a relationship with Resource Officers, so wonderful, so they are really good, not just armed officers, but good buddies and mentors and people that they can connect with the children, not just armed people to be around. So, thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Connie Froggett, who is also a member of our School Board, and the speaker after Ms. Froggett is Martha Spencer.
Thank you. Connie Froggett, 1751 Rush Mountain Creek Road in Blacksburg, Virginia, Chair back and members of the Board. I would just like to sort of tag along with what Ms. Karan said. Speaking as a citizen and a School Board Member, first of all, I do support this tax increase. Absolutely, I support funding SROs in our schools out of it, as well as additionally funding the remaining balance of our budget, and as well as the consideration perhaps of adding security to this building that's been added. I think all of those are worthwhile causes, and you've heard me speak before, and favor them. Speaking as a citizen, I would like to reiterate some of the things I said Tuesday night when we voted on this letter to present to you. Our children should not be political footballs. We should not be pitting their education against their safety. We should not be deciding whether we can have Resource Officers or we can have teachers. We have the ability in this county to have both, and this one and a half cent tax increase would certainly provide it. Now, as Ms. Karan said, we do not favor that being taken from School Board funds, as was done last year, for example, to fund the ACE program and the rent fields. When the state gave us an extra $540,000, it was removed. We were told this year by several Board Members that that would not be the case, only to find out last week that at least one is considering proposing just that. Finding out we had an additional possible $238,000 because we're teaching 50 extra students next year. The state is giving us that money because we have extra students coming, and they expect the county to also help fund those students, not take the money away to fund SROs. I was extremely disappointed to hear that this was even being considered, thought about. I don't understand why that would be the case, why you would think something like that is a reasonable thing to do. I don't think most of the people here who support our schools would support doing that. I don't think they want to have to choose between their child's education and their child's safety, and I don't think they want you to force them or force us to do that either. So, you know, as a School Board Member, please consider this, and as a citizen, I'm willing to help fund this. I'll put my $30 whatever on the table if needed, but please, take this into serious consideration. There's more at stake here than you realize, and I think we have a lot of people behind us who would agree. Our teachers are being funded below the cost of living. How much longer does this go on? When do we become West Virginia, and Kentucky, and Oklahoma? How much longer can we do this to our teachers? So, please think about it, please consider it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Martha Spencer, but we have received an email that Ms. Spencer may not be here, and I do not see her coming forward. The next speaker is George, is it Lally?
It is the need.
Sir, please come forward and state your name. The next speaker after Mr. Lally is Richard Workman, if you would come forward.
Okay, someone gave me two cents, I said I'd give my two cents worth. I like to look at people when I talk to them, but if I didn't write this down, I'd probably babble, so excuse me if I'm reading and not making good eye contact with you. My name is George Lally. As a homeowner and taxpayer in Montgomery County for the past 10 years, I'm here to speak in favor of the very modest tax increase to ensure the improved safety and continued excellence of our schools. I'm a clinical social worker by training, retired after 36-year career in the health field. As a therapist, I've seen many adults, adolescents, and children. Then I became a rookie part-time substitute teacher here seven years ago, and I love it. Relatively quickly, I discovered my niche as a substitute for either special ed teachers or even for aides. My prior pedagogical experience had been limited to a part-time job teaching one undergraduate social work course at a Rhode Island university for five semesters in the 70s. It's hard to convey to you what a consciousness-raising experience it has been for me in working in this county's schools. Working with special needs kids in their regular classrooms, including specials like music, art, P E, and library, has brought me into continual close contact with their teachers. Over and over, as a non-educationally trained person, I'm working with the kids I was able to observe and observe. I worked and observed with them, the teachers that is, and this is my distillation. I had previously grossly underestimated the quality and value of public school teachers. They are very, very skillful in what they do, in the quality and clarity of instruction, in redirecting children, maintaining their attention and cooperation in limit setting, in offering encouragement, and over and over again, a kind word or gesture. By the way, I'm not talking about one school. In my seven years, I've substituted all of the elementary schools, all of the high schools, and the middle schools of this county with the exception, I'm sorry to say, of Eastern Montgomery, which is a little farther commute. You have great teachers in Montgomery County, energetic teachers, award-winning teachers who are skillful and caring. I hope this body realizes the value of keeping the great staff you have assembled. They bring great credit on this county. Please, please, don't discourage them from staying here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Richard Workman here? And the next speaker is Joshua Holyfield, if you would come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Richard Workman. I live in Blacksburg, 212 Pine Drive. I would like to comment and have a paper response for my question. I would like to thank the members of the Conservative, members of the Board for their good stewardship for the revenue budgets in the last two years. If had no tax increases, the county ran very well, and I believe we had a surplus that went to school-operated funds. But I do have a couple of questions. In this proposed budget, did you take into consideration the Sheila Group million-dollar payment to the Board this year from the sale of the high school property? And is there any other property that can be sold that have not been used? Also, how about the projected 1.7 million in other income growth that the Board stated in an article about a month ago? And is the $600,000 from the state included in this projected budget? In response to these, the teacher association, we all want the best school, and we want the best bang for our buck. But each year, the School Board is requesting $2 or $3 million in additional. I think there needs to be a closer look at the budget request. I don't know, maybe the Board or the Association could get a line item budget from the Board and see if that can be adjusted a little bit. Another tax increase is going to hit seniors and folks struggling. Now, if you look at the number of foreflows in Montgomery County, it's not very pleasant. It may be a tipping point for some folks. If you look at the poverty level, you've got a high percentage of people that are at or below the property. If you look at the School Board request for free lunches, I think it's $600,000. I think that's a high, a high number that we ought to consider. Anyhow, I would like to comment, you all have done a good job and you try your best. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Joshua Holyfield here? And the next speaker is William Metzler, and if you could come forward and have a seat up front. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
That's Joshua Holyfield. I'm a Montgomery County teacher. Mr. Chair, distinguished members of the Board, I'm not here tonight to speak for myself. I've taught for y'all guys for 16 years. I've coached with 27 stipends y'all guys have signed up for, and I love the kids in Charlottesville, and I'm not going to leave them. I'm here tonight, the teacher's going to be sitting in the waiting room in the county offices tomorrow morning, trying to decide what county she wants to work for and why she wants to spend her life here in Montgomery County. She may ask, why Montgomery County, where the two largest areas of growth are Blacksburg and Rounder, where they won't be able to afford or will not be able to afford a median price home on a 30-year mortgage based on her salary she starts. She may ask, why Montgomery County, when they can afford a home in Raffin, Salem, Rounder County, or Rock City, can be paid more for the work that they're going to do. She may ask, why Montgomery County, when the value of a home has risen 15% in the last three years, but they only see a 0.5% increase in their own salary if they stay for another year. They may ask, why Montgomery County, when we're on the cusp of the largest teacher shortage in our state's history in the last 50 years, and they're going to be fighting with other candidates, brilliant candidates, who are going to be paying $12,000 more a median in other parts of the state. You can hope that this candidate graduated from Virginia Tech and loves the area enough to stay. You can hope that they went to our schools and loved the teachers that they had and loved the area that they're in, and that maybe because of this, they'll overlook all the whys I just asked about. But I'm hoping that today you guys will make the decision, and I'll give them a different answer. Why Montgomery County? Because they have a Board of Supervisors that are willing to step up and say to their constituents that we value your children's education, and while tax increases are never popular, we are committed to getting the best candidates to give them a brighter future. I'm hoping that they will say, why Montgomery County? Because we lead and do not follow. We don't make excuses for what the federal state government is doing, but instead we push forward, and we are an example to those who will come to live here where your priorities should be. And hopefully, maybe they'll say, why Montgomery County? Because you've asked those who live here not to just enjoy a period of growth, the beautiful mountains, and the sea of maroon and orange on Saturdays, but to invest not only in the mortgage, but also the community itself. I have hundreds of others who have already served and staked their life to teaching the children of this community, will show up tomorrow, and we will love what we do, and the candidate can be left to answer the question to themselves. Why Montgomery County? Why not somewhere else? They should say yes to Montgomery County because of the committed local officials who demand a high-quality education for all the children, who dedicate the resources necessary to teach lessons so that all children can understand who take a stand and prepare for future generations of leaders, doctors, lawyers, production workers, healthcare workers, and other law enforcement officials, just to name a few career options, who genuinely care about the children and those who teach them every day in school just because they care. They should say yes to Montgomery County because Montgomery County wants the best, and our children deserve the best every day. Please hold up your end of the commitment, provide the resources necessary to reward the teacher with a competitive wage in return for commitment to your children.
Thank you. Mr. Metzler? And then the next speaker is Mindy Quigley.
Good evening, Board Supervisors. My name is William Metzler. I live at 2596 Townhouse Drive in Christiansburg, that's in District C. Tonight, I'm here as a teacher and as one of the youngest members of the faculty of Montgomery County. I grew up in this district, and this county is the county that raised me. I have a passion for this district. I was raised in one of the poorest districts in this county with one of the poorest working families that I know of. Education is what brought me to the point that I am today, a successful young person with a career, not a job, but a career. Research shows us that education disrupts poverty. It is the single most thing that can disrupt poverty. If your argument is that we suffer from poverty in this county, then we should be looking at investing in things that can disrupt poverty, and education is one of the most important things that we can do. As a citizen of this county, I am rather embarrassed when folks ask me what I do on the weekends. I work a second job, not to afford a luxury car, not to afford a 40,000-square-foot home, but to afford a simple townhome and pay my student loan payments. That should be an embarrassment to anybody that makes policy for this county. Thank you.
The next speaker, Ms. Quigley, and then Matthew Fentress, you're the next speaker.
My name is Mindy Quigley, and I'm at 706 Nob Hill Drive in Blacksburg. I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to speak and thank you all for the work that you do. It's so important. I'm here to express my support for the proposal to increase taxes to fund additional School Resource Officers and fully fund MCPS schools. I'm one of the organizers of One Voice Blacksburg, an organization formed in the wake of the Parkland shootings to advocate for bipartisan solutions to the problem of school violence. I don't think of myself as an activist or a community organizer. I'm just a parent and an ordinary person, and like lots of other ordinary people, I recognize that school shootings are the darkest manifestations of utter brokenness. Broken young men exploiting or flouting broken laws to lash out against children and young people in their own communities. It's a multifaceted problem, and it'll require multi-pronged solutions. School Resource Officers are not the solution. We all know that, but they're part of it, not only because they provide armed and trained law enforcement presence to deter and, God forbid, cut short an attack on a school, but also because they are, as their name suggests, a resource. They are a resource for our schools, providing a link to educational programs about gun safety, drug and alcohol abuse prevention, and anti-bullying. They're a resource for our children, putting a friendly face on law enforcement and helping to build trust. They're a resource to their fellow officers, helping to identify trouble before it escalates. When I heard about this proposal, I reached out to Blacksburg's Chief of Police, Anthony Wilson. I wanted to know what value he saw in the SROs that he employs, cops who, thank God, have never yet had to raise their weapons to defend the children at the schools that they are assigned to protect. He told me that the SROs teach our kids about community, starting in kindergarten. There is bipartisan agreement that creation of real community is an essential task to fight and end school violence. SROs help in that fight. I wanted to quote Chief Wilson here. "They show children that not only do we hold them as most valuable in society, we live it by being present, by being interested, kind, and compassionate, by assuring them that their safety is not an added responsibility. It's our calling. It's my calling too, and I know that it's yours. Please show it now by raising the revenue necessary to fully fund our school system and employ these additional SROs."
Mr. Fentress? And then the next speaker is Jake, and I'm going to spell the last name, P-E-T-Z-O-L-D.
Good evening. Matthew Fentress, 395 Summer Ridge Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I've been putting pennies in the jar to keep track of how many people are for it for you. Oh, there's a pop-up here. What I'm seeing is, from a number of emails from people that cannot make it because there's a lot of school events, actually, I'm kind of happy of how many people we do have, there's a lot of school events going on. It tends to be a number of questions, so you're welcome to answer it in your heart and your head. The first one was, what are your values? Did you sign a political party pledge? Is it more important to follow the party line, the Republican or Democratic agenda? Or is it your pledge to America and the people you represent in Montgomery County? How long will we take from Peter to paying Paul? Last year, this Board withheld $540,000, which was meant for schools, but is currently going to go parks. I wrote by where the park should be. It doesn't seem to be having progress. On the other hand, health insurance went up for all Montgomery County employees. Maybe that's just a coincidence. Have you ever been a mother or a father? If so, are the decisions that you are making today, will they truly be what's best for your children? Are your decisions what is best for Montgomery County, the quality and safety of all of our kids? Does the Board have a vision for Montgomery County? It seems to me that some members are fine with the status quo. What is wrong with progress and moving forward? At the last meeting, you compared Montgomery County, some of you, to our neighboring counties, Giles and Pulaski, and pointed out how they did things different. We should be worried less about what our neighbors are doing, but what is happening here, the pride and the quality of the product and the people of Montgomery County Public Schools. I'd like to hear you all talk about that. Pulaski County just raised their taxes by 13 cents. You are more than welcome to do that, to build a new school in the place of one that is beyond repair. We as a community should not be scared about fully funding our schools. When did taxes become a four-letter word? The fear is what happens when we don't fully fund schools. Is it a coincidence that over the last 10 years, we are paying teachers less and school shootings have gone up? Is this Board's vision for our community going to continue to not raise taxes when needed, but rather wait for the next tragedy, like a roof collapse? I think that was 12 cents that time. I believe as public educators, we are not respected. From the teachers in the classroom to the cafeteria staff feeding our children, we are not respected. From the administrator to the paraprofessionals, many of you are in this room, to the guidance counselor and the nurses, from the maintenance person taking care of the buildings, to the School Board members that spoke earlier, from the cafeteria to central office staff to the men and women that bring our children to school each day, the bus drivers, they are undervalued, underappreciated, and disrespected. That's what one and a half percent is. Why are county employees receiving a 3% increase in pay while the 1,800 or so school employees are receiving... eight hundred and so school employees are receiving, what we're talking about receiving one and a half percent? Do you believe in fairness? As a father and as an educator, I appreciate your vote to at least have the conversation tonight on raising taxes to ensure the safety and quality of education for our students. But there is a great distance between having a conversation and actually doing what is right. As an American, I believe in democracy dies if those, you guys, represent us, the people, and you don't listen. What is your opinion? What is your value of the men and women that raise your children? I think it's worth a couple pennies. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, you're next, and then the next speaker is Kelly Pleasant.
Thank you. My name is Jake Pentzall. I'm at 3625 Onyx Drive. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Currently, the tax rate is eighty-nine per one hundred in Montgomery County. A homeowner whose house is worth $200,000 already pays $1,780 if in Montgomery County, $2,280 in the town of Blacksburg, and if you live in the town of Christiansburg, $2,100. I hope the board will look at all the options to pass a budget without a tax increase. I understand the importance of school safety, but the additional $238,000 increase from higher enrollment, as well as additional savings from healthcare costs and added money from the state's proposed budgets, these positions can be added without a high burden to the taxpayers. I urge you to reject the tax increase and find existing monies to fund the proposed positions. Thank you.
And the next speaker after Ms. Pleasance is Robbie Jones.
I'm Kelly Pleasant, and I live at 2737 Old Fort Road, and a lot of my colleagues have said it much better than I could say it tonight, so I'm just going to say this. I support the one and a half cent tax increase. I hope that we can get your support on all of it. I would have supported more. I've said that before. I certainly thank you for bringing this to a real debate this year, and I appreciate your commitment to that. I tried to think this week of how I could cut a penny in half. I'm not good at cutting pennies in half. I am good at stretching them, and most teachers are. We're really good at it. As a matter of fact, we've been doing it for a really long time. But just because you're good at something out of necessity doesn't mean it's sustainable or you can keep it up forever. Teachers have college degrees. We are licensed professionals, and our schools need every penny. Other people get cost of living increases, including our seniors. This is not a matter of politics. I know everything is these days. I get it, but I don't feel that this is. This is an important time in our county where we have to make some important decisions about our safety of our children and about the people who are teaching them. I've taught for twenty years. I have taught with some amazing educators. My children had amazing educators in Montgomery County. I don't think they could have gotten a better education anywhere, and I believe that. I want that to keep up, but I believe in my heart that if we keep lagging behind in salary, we're not going to be able to keep that. We're going to be getting what's left when the other people have taken the jobs. That's not good enough for me. It shouldn't be good enough for you. Thank you.
Robbie Jones. And before Ms. Jones speaks, if there are other speakers who have not signed up, I'm going to ask you to come into the second row, and that way I'll just start calling you on the second row. And then we... Thank you. Ms. Jones, please state your name and address, and I'm sorry for interrupting you there.
That's all right. My name is Robbie Jones. I live at 996 Cole Hall Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm here tonight to speak as an individual and as an employee of Montgomery County Schools, and I'm going to give you my two cents worth. I sent each of you a letter about a month ago, and I'm going to just refer back to that a little bit. I'm a custodian at Christiansburg Middle School. I have the privilege of walking through that school and seeing many, many things every day. I see paraprofessionals changing diapers and dealing with children that have difficulties and need their attention one hundred percent the whole time they're at the school. I see bus drivers delivering our children to school and home safely. I see our cafeteria staff feeding our children that have not eaten over the weekend. I see our employees clothe our children. I see every employee in that school system love every child in that building. I will tell you one thing. I am an educator. Everyone who works in the school system today is an educator, whether you lead by example or you teach in a classroom. I very much support the one and a half percent for education. We deserve it. We thank you for what you've given us in the past, but it's come to a point where we have to draw the line somewhere. You can't settle for second base. If you want to get the best education in Montgomery County, you need to hire the best educators. We're not being able to do that. You have people that apply for jobs, and when a job's offered to them, they turn it down because it's not enough money. When's enough going to be enough? I encourage you to reconsider raising the tax rate or talking about it, and I thank you for your time.
And there's a couple of other folks that have added to the list, and they were... that came in a little bit late. I'm going to go with this list, and then I'm going to call on the folks who have not signed up. And I believe the next name on this list is Thomas... is it Lazo? And then the next speaker after Mr. Lazo is Betsy Osborne.
Hi. I'm also here to give my two cents. I'm also a custodian in the school district, and I'm here to support the tax increase, the full tax increase that's proposed. And just like the preceding speaker, being a custodian, you get to see every operation of the school. You also get to see how early the teachers come in. You see how late the teachers come in. You know which ones are going to stay two hours after, who's going to come here two hours earlier. You see just how much every investment in the school makes a big, big impact. I haven't seen a wasted penny yet in the schools. Everything has a tangible impact, and if, as the county continues to grow, if the increases aren't coming along, then it's just a step back, and I encourage you to make the tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker after Ms. Osborne is Corinne Meadows.
Good evening. My name is Betsy DeSalvo Osborne, and I live at 2805 Heritage Lane in Blacksburg. I wanted to say thank you all for having us open this to public address this evening. Because of reality like this and a decision like this really shouldn't be left to just you all alone. That's a lot of weight and a lot of pressure. But being a teacher and a very big history nerd, I thought I'd take a chance to educate you all a little bit on some history. So this image right here is World War I medical tools. This is what they used as common practice during World War I. This image right here was taken today in my classroom, so students using virtual reality The purpose of me showing you this today is because we need to focus on what's considered best practice. We don't want our doctors operating using World War I weapons because they're considered out of date, and they're kind of scared. We don't want our teachers educating students using tools which are no longer fitting to the times that we live in. The reason I'm mentioning this comparison is because of what happened in my classroom today, as I was attempting to use this tool to educate our students. The Wi-Fi in our building kept going out. It's really obnoxious when you have sixteen middle schoolers coming and yelling at you because their internet got cut off of their Wi-Fi goggles. It added one more hurdle that I had to jump over through the day. It added one more struggle. However, fully funding our schools, that money could go to helping build the Wi-Fi up and to fix our broadband issues. And besides, it's really the right thing to do. Things change. Costs change. Our students' safety and their education should be above all types of politics. We can't keep bearing the costs on the backs of our students. And your decision needs to be based upon one question: What are our students worth to you all? And that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Meadows? And then that's the last of the folks that are signed up, and then I'll start going through. And again, I'll announce this. If folks would like to address the board, I'm going to ask you to come up on the second row, and then I'm going to just go in order. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Corinne Meadows. I live at 205 Maple Drive in Christiansburg, and I am speaking to you as an individual in support of the tax increase. I obviously am a teacher, but more than that, I have experience from the county side of things too, because I'm married to a deputy sheriff. And he, right now, is making a lot more money than I am, even though we've been doing this job for the same amount of time, which is twenty years. He's a lieutenant, which, of course, comes with its own pay raise, but also, as a teacher, I don't have an opportunity to earn overtime money or earn a promotion other than going to get my doctorate, which I think might net me another fifteen hundred dollars a year in pay. And I think that's one reason that if we want to keep quality educators in our school system, that we have to be able to somehow support them. And I, you know, I don't think anybody's really excited about having to pay more money in taxes, but there is such thing as inflation, and, you know, if we wanted to have the same tax rate as they had post-Civil War, then we could have the same kind of education system as well, and that would be unfortunate, because I think Montgomery County is known in part for its fantastic educational system, and I think if we're going to, you know, compete with some of the other counties that are more progressive and urban up north of us, then we need to consider that we might need to have a similar tax rate, and our tax rate is well below theirs. So I think that's helpful. And I also wanted to support... I know that there's been some talk about having a tax sale, because there are lots of people that owe the county a large amount of money in personal property taxes, and as a tax-paying member of this county in the town of Christiansburg, I would support trying to collect on some of those taxes too, so that you guys are not in the dire financial straits that you are, because I know that you guys don't get the money from the state to support education the way that it would be nice to have. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I understand, because I remember this six years ago when there was a tax increase, about a lot of the senior citizens that were complaining about higher taxes, and I understand that people are on fixed incomes, but I think that the seniors need to remember that even though it does hurt a little bit, the people that are locally educated in our school system are the people that are providing them services all day long, all sorts of services, and they're living in a county in which they can get the services that they need because we have a great education system and the people stay in the county and provide those good services. So that would be my rebuttal to the seniors that, again, feel the pinch of raised taxes. I think that it's inevitable, and it's too bad that it has to happen, but, you know, that's the way that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, that's all that signed up. Ma'am, I believe you with the scarf, if you would come forward... Oh, is there... I'm sorry. I did not see you. Ma'am, I'm sorry. The computer screen blocked that.
Thank you. I'm Marjorie Mullins, and I live at 123 Primrose Drive in Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm a teacher here in Montgomery County, third grade, and I usually always share something personal when I come up here. I just can't help it. It affects me personally, professionally. I am going to need to add my children to my health insurance plan. That's another $375 a month I'm going to have to pay. I'm possibly working on taking on a mortgage on my own. It's difficult. I'm fifty years old, and I really don't have the energy to get a second job. Teachers are feeling really guilty when they have a break, like spring break, and have a day where they don't do schoolwork. We're working evenings, weekends, holidays. We love it, but it's a lot, and I can't go out and get a second job. My daughter is going to be a college student. She's graduating from Blacksburg High School this year. I'm very excited, and she's had a great education, but, you know, she's thinking about wanting to become a theater teacher. And, you know, we kind of discourage some of these young people from getting into education because we know what their life, the road's going to be like financially, and we obviously don't get into this for the money, but that's a reality. We have to pay our bills. So I really thank you for this time and opportunity, and please, please think about the kids and the teachers. And one more thing, a safety resource officer, if you say that school safety is important, you can't use the word "but." You can't say, "School safety is important, but..." It is or it isn't, and it's a risk to our lives personally and our children's, students, yours, grandkids. It is important, and there can't be a "but." That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Erin Collier. I'm a social worker by training and currently work in behavioral health and addiction treatment grant writing. So I know a thing or two about prevention, how important education is to prevent behavioral health issues, substance abuse issues in children. I volunteer on the board at the PTO Board of Kips Elementary, where my two girls go to school. They're in the bathroom there. And my husband and I are homeowners in Blacksburg. I live at 2701 Heritage Lane. I'm obviously here to speak in support of the tax increase tonight. It's a very small price to pay to help protect our children in schools. In this political climate, and we cannot be complacent. We must do it in our power now to help to ensure the safety of our children, and this tax increase is one concrete way we can help ensure that safety. The tax increase will also help us recruit and retain skilled teachers. The MCPS pay rate is much lower than surrounding counties, and this tax increase will help resolve that discrepancy. Teachers are not asking for an exorbitant raise. They are merely asking for a cost of living adjustment, which I think is fairly reasonable. If all of you would like a cost of living adjustment, I think it's a fairly reasonable thing to want to have. I volunteer in my children's school each week. I see firsthand the skill and professionalism that MCPS teachers bring to the classroom. I also see the teachers' cars in the parking lot in the evenings and on the weekends, because I live in the neighborhood, and I drive by, and I know that they're working just to stay caught up, and I know that they're working to prepare for the week ahead because they're that dedicated, and they're that dedicated with their current pay rate. We want to keep them. The tax increase will end up costing an average family in county only about thirty to forty dollars per year, and that is a small increase to make a huge impact. I encourage you to vote yes on the real estate tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Christine Heilig, H-E-I-L-I-G. I live at 318 Pepper Street, South Christiansburg, Virginia. I've been employed with the Montgomery County Board of Education for sixteen years. I'm one of those support staff that Ms. Jones talked about, that clean and change diapers. I've had necklaces broke. I've had my clothes torn off of me. I have scratches that I've carried to my grave that I wouldn't allow my children or grandchildren to do to me, but as a support staff, I have to take it and smile and go back the next day as a new day. So on behalf of the support staff, I ask you all to support the tax increase. I am also one of the support staff that go to Richmond every year to lobby to our state's efforts. senators. So now I'm here to lobby for my, to my local representatives. Here's my two cent worth.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Crystal Findres. 395 Summit Ridge Road, Christiansburg. And obviously you've seen me a lot. You know I support this increase. There's my two cent. My students deserve it. My coworkers earn it without a doubt daily. And my personal children are completely worth it. And my fear is if we don't take steps in the direction to start supporting our education system now, we're going to find ourselves in another situation where we are not retaining good teachers, we're not keeping good teachers, and our students will not benefit as greatly as they could. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin? And again, I'm going to ask folks to come forward, have a seat in the second row. If you would like to address the board, you don't have to have signed up. Thank you.
Thank you, Franklin. 857 Woodrow Road, Christiansburg. Never sure whether I'm going to speak to you all or not, so I'll wait and listen. So first of all, the number of teachers that we have lost and employees over the last several years, we are still trying to gain those back. We are way behind on that. So everyone else who is doing the work is like me. You don't hire enough people, so I have to work longer, I have to work harder. That's why I'm here today in my workplace is I have to work longer, I have to work hard, right? Because there's not enough people to do the work. As far as resource officers, my son was a junior in high school in Columbine County. The next year on the anniversary, this big 260-pound heavyweight wrestler was terrified to go back to school on the anniversary because of the thought of what might happen a year later and somebody might try to do the same thing again at his school. So resource officers are not the total answer to this, but we need to make sure that there is no "but" when we're supporting to make sure that our children, our little children, are not going to be afraid to come to school because they believe that there's someone there who is there to help protect them. Okay? That's not a "but." That's something we have to do. So this one and a half percent to help support that needs to happen. I did not vote for the budget that you all received because I believed it should have been more. When you go from a 2.7, this is what we need to keep things moving forward and to keep us progressively moving forward, to 2.3? No, that's not enough. To ask these folks to take a one and a half percent raise, that's a slap in the face. Okay? So I did not vote for our budget because I believe we needed to do more. So I appreciate what you all have done in the past because you all have stepped up. Things are not happening at the state level. That will be addressed in other ways, I'm sure, I hope. But we have to do what we have to do in Montgomery County to keep things moving forward. You know, it aggravates me to death when things are put before me as a board member comparing us to other districts, other areas. I don't care what they do. This is Montgomery County. We need to do what we need to do for Montgomery County. And that means we need to make sure that we're supporting this educational system. Because if we don't support the children that are here now, as was stated, the poverty level will continue to rise because the cost of living is rising everywhere, including Montgomery County. If we are not preparing our children to do the jobs for the future, they will not have jobs. You know, I work in an industry where I watch and look at the technology that's going on and the fork truck that I drive, a robot's going to be running around doing that, you know, in the near future. And if we don't have children who can create those robots, who can work on those robots, who can do whatever is needed to be done in this world as it changes for our eyes, we're going to be in big trouble. And our children are going to be in big trouble. So don't pay for it now, we will definitely pay for it later. You know, we put lots of money into prisons and the number one determination is where our kids are doing in the third grade. So stop building prisons and we need to start putting that money into education. So again, thank you for all that you have done for us, but I encourage you to do this one and a half percent and use it for the resource officers. Do not take anything away from our teachers. It wasn't enough asked for to start off with, so you need to do what we asked for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not doing pennies. There's a board.
Sir?
My name is John Gill. I live at 2037 Hope Field Road in Pilot. I see this one and a half cents increase, but, you know, first of all, we have just been, we're being assessed right now the new rate. We don't know what our new rate's going to be. So here we are taxing a penny and a half on us plus what the assessment is going to be. And assessments have not been small in any time and every time they come on up, it never goes down, it always goes up. So I'd say, you know, you're going to be getting additional money just by the increase in assessments. I think the basic problem with your budgetary is with the schools. You have no control over what they spend. You give them a budget, they spend it where they want to. I only got a, and at this point in time, I just took a Google and I say that we have about 9,700 students, which is relatively the same amount of students we've had over the past several years. And 81% of them are proficient in math and 82% of them are proficient in reading. And that's a student, according to Google. The student teacher ratio 12 to 1. A 12 to 1 student, a teacher ratio is, my golly, that's really pretty good. By that standard, I would suspect that they should be 100% in precision in math. I got a social security percent raise this year, 2%. Well, they took the 2% and took two-thirds of that and they applied it to Medicare. So I get one-third of what I got. It didn't make me feel good. But, and I, you know, the teachers from past experience, if I understand it, you know, they're paid 100% for their hospitalization and things, so.
Excuse me. This speaker has the right to be able to address this board without being shouted down, just like each one of you had the opportunity to speak to the board. And I expect folks to treat him with respect, just as you were treated with respect. Thank you.
I may be incorrect on how much they are, but I know that they do get a good percentage of that. I pay, I pay myself Medicare every year and they just went ahead and increased it in a sizable amount and take up the 2% that I got. So, I think one other thing that the teachers are paid relatively with their, the pay and their package that goes with them, receive in excess of $60,000. That's for first year, first year's teacher. That's for 10 months. It's not for a full year. That's for 10 months. So they're making somewhere in the neighborhood of $38,000 or more. Because I haven't looked at the statistics. I just came here tonight just to voice my opinion. And I know it's, a lot of people listen to Chris Brem with me. A lot of you are familiar with the school boards and you work for the school boards in the past, present, and now. So, you know, but I have a state problem on me that a whole lot, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Becky Hurtling. I live at 3845 Schoolhouse Drive in Rider. I feel like I come with a unique perspective. I am the spouse of a law enforcement officer in Montgomery County. He has worked two school shootings in Montgomery County. Do not tell me it cannot happen here. Do not tell me it cannot happen here again. Our schools need school recourse officers, period, to keep kids safe, to keep teachers safe, keep principals safe, keep everyone in our building safe. I am also a teacher in Montgomery County. I've been with the county for more than 10 years. I go in early. I stay late. I go in on the weekends. I work at home. I'm very fortunate, there are times I shove a stack of papers at my husband and say, hey, great these. And he love them and he says, I got you. I'm not a parent, but I have lots of kids. And I'm a finite resource. There's only so much I can give or if something has to break. I don't know how this tax increase cannot be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the folks that have come forward that wish to address the board. And this is on the 90 and a half cent tax rate increase. Before I close, I want to give the opportunity for any other individuals that would like to speak on this issue. I'm not seeing anyone else coming forward. So at this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing in regards to the 90 and a half cent proposed real estate, ARPA's real estate tax rate. There is no one signed up for the budget. There is two public hearings back to back. And so if there are individuals who would like to address the board, there's no one signed up, I would ask that you come up again on the second row. If there's individuals who would like to address the board on this issue. Is there anyone who would? And everyone who would, yes. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hello again. Connie Froggett, 1751 Brush Mountain Creek Road in Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm going to take this opportunity to first of all, answer a lot of the questions that were posed earlier. I know being a board member like you, you can't answer. We can. So, and I think there, it sounds like there are a few people in the audience who need an education on education. So here we go. And I also get the feeling it might have been a while since they've been in a school. First of all, forget this. There's my two cents. This is a check for $8,000 that I got today for the Montgomery County Educational Foundation. Because this is what we have come to in order to try to properly fund our schools. We go out and we beg and we plead and we fundraise and our kids fundraise and our teachers fundraise and we write grants. And we bring in thousands of dollars every year to fulfill the needs that are not met by the federal, state, or local government. I'm not putting this all on you. We all know. It comes from other sources as well. This is what we have come to. This is why we sponsor our snow day announcements, Domino's Pizza. Because we do everything we can to get any cent we can. And yet still, our teachers take money out of their pockets every day. So as to some of these questions, first of all, and you know the answers to some of these, but just to go over. Yes, there is a line item school budget and it was presented to you by the superintendent and has been every year that he has been here. It is very thorough. I can't say I've seen quite the same coming from any other entity in this county, quite so much detail. We lay it out. We tell you exactly what we're spending it on. You know where it's being spent. School lunches, including the free lunches in this county, are completely self-supporting. It does not come from county tax coffers. It is a program that is totally self-funded through federal funds for those kids and then for our kids paying for their meals. As you know, thanks to your work, our properties have been sold. And that money is coming back to the schools because they were school properties and as you promised, they would. And as a result, we're now able to do some improvements in the Christiansburg strand that are desperately needed. I think you guys have seen the feasibility study we have on the Christiansburg schools. For those who haven't, it's this big. Okay? Millions of dollars that need to be done. Millions. And we thank you for what you have done there and the two cents you put aside to fund it. Are we getting our bang for the buck? Absolutely. And we're doing it on the backs of those people sitting right over there. We're one of the highest performing schools in school divisions in southwest Virginia and we're one of the lowest paying to our teachers. So yeah, we're getting our bang for our buck. Our PTR is not 12 to 1. It's as high as 22 to 1. That is most definitely incorrect. And only a small percentage of our teachers get their insurance paid and it's only for them, not their families. But the majority of them are paying premiums and last year, they went up just like Medicare did and it ate up pretty much every bit of the raise that they got. No, our numbers have not been steady for the last few years. In fact, with what we know we're getting next year, we're going to be up 300 students in a division of less than 10,000. 300 students with 53 less teachers since 2010. And again, having one of the higher cost of livings, we have one of the lowest starting salaries for the first 10 years of our teachers. There's been a comment made about struggling seniors and yes, I know they struggle. They do get a social security cost of living raise. If you compare that to the raises our teachers have gotten in the same period since 2009, 2010, our teachers have gotten less. And the 1.5% that we're hoping to give them this year is less than the 2% that social security is getting. So they'll be even farther behind. But the difference there is, most of those folks have paid their mortgage, put their kids through college, saved for retirement. Our families and our teachers are families. They have a mortgage. They have kids to feed. They have college to save for. They have insurance and bills to pay. So they're taking home a lot less once you take that out. And there was a comment about how many millions we've been getting each year. I'd like to point out, based simply on inflation, what our budget was.
Finish your sentence.
Just that we are down $9 million just based on the cost of living. So please keep these things in mind. We need to understand what's really going on.
Thank you. Are there anyone, other speakers that would like to address the board? I'm seeing no one else coming forward at this point in time, so I'll go on once, go on twice, or go ahead and close the second public hearing. Is there any other business at this time? So we have another meeting on Monday at our regular scheduled time at 7:15 and this meeting is now adjourned.